Starting, all attendees are in listen-only mode.
Okay, thank you. Welcome, everybody. We're gonna get the party started today. So, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Good morning, Supervisor Gates.
Here.
Supervisor Galvin.
Here.
Supervisor Sellers.
Here.
Supervisor Gallardo.
Here.
Chairman Hickman.
And here.
Thank you.
So, today's a special day, of course, as always, but this is the part of our invocation and pledge of allegiance. And today Supervisor Galvin is sponsoring the prayer and the pledge. So if you could please introduce your guests.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. It's my pleasure and honor to have Darcy Norbert, Mike Norbert, and Ryan Smith of the Hoss Trail Alliance do the pledge and the prayer for us today.
Great. If we could all please rise.
Dear God in heaven, Father of us all, we ask thee this day to be with us, that we are grateful for the rain that we have received. We're grateful for this great state and county that we live in. We're grateful for the people that serve us and that do so much for our benefit and well-being. We pray that the rain will continue for moisture and that we will be an oasis, as we have been, for people to come, visit, live, work, and seek opportunity here in this beautiful part of our country. We are asking this day for blessings on our children in schools. They may be safe and protected, that there may be unity, love, and peace in our hearts, and the things that we may do may be for the benefit of others, and we may follow the golden rule and treat others as we would want ourselves to be treated. We again are grateful for all that we have and that we've been brought here together to discuss things that will benefit all the citizens in this county and people that live here for their benefit and their enjoyment. Again, we're grateful for what we have and ask for these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So Supervisor Galvin.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. If Ryan and Mike and Darcy would like to come up to the podium, I just want to acknowledge them and thank them. You know, being a supervisor, you are, I am in awe of many of the people that work here in Maricopa County, but one of the pleasant surprises is meeting and working with people who help make Maricopa County better on a volunteer basis. And the Hoss Trail Alliance is one great example. And the Norbert family and the Smith family have done a great deal for Maricopa County. And when you talk about a county being a great place to live, work, and play, to me, the word "play" is very important as well. It's equally important. We live in a beautiful state. We live in a beautiful county. And the Hoss Trail Alliance, led by Mike and Ryan and their friends, have done a tremendous job in making Maricopa County more beautiful and a better place to play. And if you won't mind, Mr. Chairman, I want to highlight the great things that they have done. Formed in 2018 as a 501(c)(3), the Hoss Trail Alliance is a nonprofit organization that was formed to create a partnership with Tonto National Forest to help maintain, enhance, and expand the Hoss Trail system to be enjoyed by bikers, hikers, and all outdoor enthusiasts. What they have done so far is incredible. They've created and received National Forest Service approval of a master trail plan, including 25 miles of new trails. They've built over 27 miles of new trails with an additional 7.2 miles in the building process. They perform bimonthly ongoing trail maintenance days. They installed signage posts at over 50 intersections. They've installed rollover gates at six critical access points. They've logged over 11,000 volunteer hours from hundreds of individuals, and they've raised $250,000 from private and corporate donors. And I spoke with them this morning, and they told me about one trail specifically, Boulder Dash, where it was over 2,000 man-hours to create a trail. And I just think it's absolutely phenomenal. On behalf of Maricopa County, I want to thank you for the work you do. Also, please tell your organization that we thank them and thank you for coming this morning to do the prayer and the pledge. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Right. And you guys don't have to stick around. But if he's keeping you here.
We want to see the, we want to see the pet.
Oh, okay.
Only if you adopt it.
They're available.
I said, that's my John Wick dog.
All right. Well, today, we're blessed. Most of the times, we see Kim on video, but she must thank the world of this little guy's behavior to be in person. So Kim's gonna come up, and this name is very familiar to a guy in the poultry industry. And I thought this was a trademark name. This guy's name is Butterball.
Yes, this is Butterball. Appropriately named, for sure. He is a short-stacked pitbull mix of some sort, maybe corgi in him. He is really well-trained. He's been at the shelter since March 2nd, so just about a month now. He is only three years old. He's a really good dog. He loves to play fetch, and I've learned that he is good with sit, down, and shake. And that's probably just scratching the surface of how smart he really is. And he's very well-trained. He knows I have treats in my pocket right now. But sounds like we may have found his owner in the audience. His future adopter is here, it sounds like. But we do have our Bissell Empty the Shelter's adoption event also starting this weekend, April 1st through the 10th. So all adoption fees are waived for dogs six months and older. So it's a great time to come meet your best friend, and maybe that's Butterball.
Great. Bids? Kim, I was gonna ask you a question. We had a fantastic event at Chase Field.
Yes.
And the pet that was up for adoption, I went back and told my parents about it. That was about the most beautiful rottweiler.
Oh.
That was, I cannot believe he lasted a day in that shelter. Did he get adopted?
Do you have a name?
I don't.
We got quite a few.
I, he was the show puppy of the year, though, but you.
I can look into that for you. I'll find out which one. We got a few.
I hope he, I hope he got a spectacular home.
You're looking for a rottweiler. There's one named Bertha.
Really?
She's a good dog.
I'll tell my parents about, I already have, I already have two rescues. My wife would kill me if I brought one home. So sometimes I think we're rescuing our kids more than the dogs, so, with their behaviors. So, anyway, thanks for being here. It's great to see you in person.
Yes.
And best of luck to Butterball to find a home.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay, Juanita, are there any announcements or corrections to the agenda?
Chairman, I have no announcements or corrections to this agenda. Thank you.
Great. So we will go on into the business of the county. We're gonna start off with a presentation. This is in recognition of Joy Rich, our county manager, for the years of service to Maricopa County. I thought it would be good to make some comments. Again, one of the worst days I've had is when you called me and said, hey, I'm retiring on you. So, but it was a great day, too, because I'm very, very proud of being able to serve this, my entire career with you at the county. So I thought I'd just put some comments down first and give us all time to, because Joy's been spectacular for us in her leadership role. There's, there's plenty of county business to get to today, but first, we want to take a minute to recognize a person who has had a hand in just about every aspect of county business for the past six and a half years. Joy Rich, our county manager since 2016, embodies everything you would want in a public servant. She's been a trusted advisor to all of us on the board, a mentor to her leadership team, a great boss to advocate for the 13,000 employees under her supervision. This is Joy's last meeting before her retirement on April 7th, after more than 30 years of public service. And we wanted to make sure she knew how we felt about her before she leaves, which is dangerous. Well, we've made a video, and I think we've all participated in this. So if we could, please, roll the video. We knew we had a superstar in Joy, and she understands the vitality of this organization and the county rests in its people. She has led, by example, the, our county employees have been number one on Joy's mind, I think, since her first day.
She's been an outstanding manager for Maricopa County. I met Joy actually when she was in planning and zoning, and I was at the General Motors Desert Proving Ground. You know, our people came in for a building permit, and she then said, okay, let me get a couple people that really understand what we're dealing with here to stand with me, and then you explain to me what you need to accomplish. And that whole process took 15 or 20 minutes, and she said, okay, I think we can work this out. And I thought, what a great problem solver.
Now, I will remember most of all when I first got appointed, because that was such a whirlwind experience. And Joy was there for me every single minute of the day, especially when I had a lot of questions, didn't know where to go in the building.
Being able to work alongside her on making this a more sort of positive place or inviting place for people with families. In particular, the efforts on childcare, you know, developing a childcare center. That's something where I wish we could have done it earlier, but we wouldn't be doing it now if it wasn't for Joy.
It was a Saturday morning, August of 2021, received an early morning phone call from Joy that in this storm that covered, blanketed Maricopa County, Gila Bend was devastated. She was all hands on deck.
I mean, she has just been a rock star for Maricopa County.
She's a working mom. She's got children now that are, that are in school away from her. Totally understanding if this is the time of her life that, that she wants to spend time with them. I think that's great. She's given a lot of, lot of years, great years to county service.
But I know that she's earned some time to just enjoy what she wants to do, and, and I, I wish her the best.
I wish her nothing but the best. She's just a class act, and I'll always be grateful for the time I got to work with her.
She has worked so hard, you know, this career in public service, to have an opportunity and go do what she wants to do. I think it's great, and I wish her the very best. But we are gonna miss her.
Thank you so much, Joy. We wish you well. We know there's no such thing as retirement. You'll be right back doing some great stuff, I'm sure. We wish you well. Good luck, Joy.
Hi, Mom. Congratulations on your retirement. Thank you for always being an inspiration to us and showing us the importance of hard work. We are beyond thankful for everything you've done for the both of us. Hope you have some more time to play KAB Crush. We love you, and once again, congratulations on your well-deserved retirement.
Hi, Mom.
Hi, Joy. Congratulations on your retirement.
We love you. Can't wait to spend more time with you.
Can't wait to see you on the pickleball court for our brutal battles.
So before I open it up for comments from our board, and, and I'm gonna ask you, too, Juanita, you're, you're gonna get a shot to say something here, lucky. I wanted to point out some things about Joy that some, all of us know here, but for the people watching at home. She is the first woman to hold the position of county manager. That's true. She has been recognized as distinguished professional planner from the Arizona Planning Association in 2019. She received the Woman of the Year Award from Arizona Rock Products Association, Local Official of the Year from the National Association of Home Builders, and recognized by The Business Journal for her efforts with workforce diversity. She has championed the Workforce Transformation Initiative restructuring human resources, the county's recruitment and retention efforts, including market range pay adjustments, tuition, reimbursement, and loan repayment programs. She initiated paid parental leave program, expanded flexible work schedules, and the development of a daycare center to, to better support our employees with small children. She's rebranded the county to create an updated identity and unity across our 13,000 employees and 50 departments. And thanks to her husband, Barry, and three daughters for sharing Joy with us. Well wishes as they get to spend more time together, which is, we've talked about it all the time, how important our families are to us. And, and you lead with that by example. We hear about your family. You, you share, you share that with us, and we share our, our families with you because look what you're, what you've done for, for the families of the workers in, in Maricopa County, always looking at that and knowing how important what we have back home is to create a better, a better county for all. So with that, Joy, I'm, I get to be the very last person that, on some things, I get to reflect on. So I would ask Juanita if she has anything to say. You guys have been working on this same floor together now for a couple, for many years, so.
Well, thank you for the opportunity. I did not have anything, I don't have a speech prepared, exactly, but Joy, I just want to wish you the best. It has been a pleasure working with you on the same floor. You have, like the chairman said, led by example, many great accomplishments. I have seen you as a great leader and someone, an example for a lot of women in higher positions. But appreciate all the work that you have done in your service for Maricopa County. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. So I'm gonna go by, I'm gonna go by seniority on the board. That's, that's how I get to wrap it up. So Tom, any, anything?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Joy, first of all, congratulations. You know, when I considered applying for the county board, one of the factors that led me to applying was that I already knew you had a great reputation as a great county manager. When I called people, everyone just said, Joy Rich is the absolute best. But now I've got to seen it up close and personal for the last 16 months or so, working with you on a daily basis through the trials and tribulations. It's just been a great revelatory experience to see how you're able to capably manage and lead a county of 14,000 employees, work with a board of five distinct individuals, but also take care of 4.5 million county taxpayers. But at the same time, your grace, your dignity has shone through, and your love for your family. And I think that's what makes the total package of who you are, a great person, a great leader, a great mentor, and a great colleague. I'm gonna miss you tremendously. I wish we had a lot more time to work together. But one thing I know is that the name Joy Rich will echo throughout Maricopa County for years to come because of all of your great and considerable accomplishments. So thank you and congratulations.
Awesome. Jack?
Thank you, Chairman. You know, a couple of months ago, when, when Joy walked into my office, myself and my chief were in the office, and she closed the door, and I thought, this is not gonna be good. And it was even worse than I thought it, it could be. She said, I'm planning to retire. And I said, I vote no. But, you know, seriously, the involvement I've had in the National Association of Counties, you know, we are the fastest-growing county for a reason. It's because we are the best-run county in the country as well. And my involvement with the National Association of Counties, everywhere I go, people are always talking to me about what a great job we do and asking for our input on, on what things they can do to improve their operations. It's phenomenal. I mean, it just never ends. So thank you for all, all of that. The other thing I'll mention is that I feel like the, the measure of a true leader is how a person reacts, how a leader reacts when they're faced with a crisis, with challenges that really no one has seen before and don't know how to deal with. And during my chairmanship, we went through a pandemic and an audit, in quotation marks, by the state senate. And Joy was calm and rational and logical about every single issue that we were faced with and dealt with it and resolved it. I can't imagine any leader being, doing a better job than you did. So thank you, and we will miss you.
Great. Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It is a sad day, but it's a joyful day as well. Sorry. But I wanna, I wanna pick up on where Jack ended, which is the way that you dealt with, with so many multiple crises here in Maricopa County. We really do find out what someone is made of in those, in those times. And not once did I ever have any concern because of the steady hand that you had. And the, you were willing to put whatever work needed to be put into it to get us where we needed to be, whether it was issues with elections, whether it was COVID. And so I, I thank you so much for that. We would be in a different place as a county if it were not for your leadership. And so you could just rest on those laurels, and you'd be set. But I'm so proud of what you did in the, you know, the calmer days. And this is, this is what I would say. You have made Maricopa County an employer of choice for employees throughout Maricopa County. And you did that in a very intentional way. You went about, you said, look, we're not gonna be top of the pay range. That's not who we are. But how can we get there? How can we be fiscally responsible and create a place where people would want to come to work? And you've done that. That has been set forth. And I'm so proud of your leadership on that, because that would not have happened without you. And now people are gonna, we're gonna have better employees. We already do. We're gonna continue to have better employees into the future, who are gonna have better lives. And their families are gonna have better experiences because of the leadership that you've shown. No one can replace you. No one can replace you. But I'm excited about the future, both for Maricopa County with our new leadership, but more importantly, the future for you. You now can go and do those things that you're passionate about beyond Maricopa County and relish every day. Please do. We'll be here. Let us know if there's anything that you need. But you were sharing with me some of your plans for the future, and I am so excited. Don't listen to Steve Gallardo. You go retire. You enjoy yourself. And, and thank you so much for everything that you've done. It's been a true honor to work with you.
Thank you, Bill. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Joy, it was quite a surprise. I wasn't expecting you letting us know you were going to, to step away and retire. I was kind of thrown back. I wasn't expecting it, but I understand. I can tell you, you've just been just an excellent leader. And going back to what Supervisor Gates said, the way you have moved this county forward and really have put not, our employees definitely front and center. Parental leave program, huge. I mean, it doesn't get the spotlight, but it's huge. We know it. When it comes to, to making sure the employees are not only having a, a safe and friendly and great experience here at the county, but to be able to take care of their families, that's huge. When you talk about retaining and recruiting, that's what employees are looking for. They can go anywhere. They can go to Phoenix, they can go to state. They come here. They come here because of the direction that you have placed for our employees. When it comes to taking care of our constituency, our families, you have been just front and center. You and I have had many, many conversations. And folks, I don't think you guys know this. I mean, I'm a person that will call, call Joy on a weekend, you know, it's like, and she answers. And she's on top of it. And she could easily tell Steve, you know, we'll deal with it on Monday, but she's on top of it. And even on the Gila Bend, I couldn't be more, more thankful for your quick response on that. I mean, we had, we had a couple of folks that had passed away in that one. We have families that were devastated. It was, it was something that I never anticipated until I went out there and I saw the, the water markings, but you were on top of it. You didn't blink an eye. You didn't blink an eye, you got the team together, and you were able to address emergency management-type situation right there in Hila Bend. You have just been a great inspiration for a lot of folks. The fact, I mean, we talked about the first female county manager, I can't believe it's taken that long, but nonetheless, we have broken that glass city, you have broken that glass ceiling, Joy. You know, there are going to be so many that are gonna look and say, "I can run the fourth-largest county in this country. I can be able to do exactly what Joy has done." And so I couldn't be more thankful. And yes, I do believe there's no such thing as retirement. So you wanna be on a Parks Board, you wanna, P&amp;Z, isn't that right up your alley? Isn't that right up your alley? Or is that's what you're retiring from? But nonetheless, you have just been a great inspiration, a true leader. And so many times, and what I always appreciate is you don't tell me what you think I wanna hear, you tell me the truth. And even the stuff that just, I wanna just hit my head, but it's the truth. And you're honest, you're blunt, you're straightforward, you are very professional when it comes to, but you have that joking side of you as well, that humorous side of you, and I appreciate that. But I can't imagine the county being without you, Joy. You've just been an inspiration for everybody, and just thank you for your service, everything you've done for our families, our kids, our employees. You have made them top priority as you move forward through this county. So best of luck, and if you ever wanna be on a board, please give me a call.
Well, you see why I'm going last, just because I could've said everything that my colleagues up here have said. But I get to go last because I've served the most amount of time with you as on this board prior, you know, to these guys arriving. So, you know, instead of rereading the speech of George Washington and turning over the Continental Army and saying, "I'm done with leadership," you know, it's kinda like that. You're turning over an army, filled with leaders actually, that you have prepared. And I saw that out of Tom, too. When Tom called me and retired, and, you know, as I was chairman back then, I said, "Oh, my gosh," you know? He goes, "But Clint, you're getting well-trained leaders, so no matter who you pick, that person's gonna get a great team." And I really thought, "No, I'm going forward, and this is a new county manager that we're gonna have a hand in picking. There's no way somebody's gonna, you know, exceed a guy like Tom." But you did. I mean, because you learned from him, and then you developed your team. And I know that, and Tom, every time I would call him, which is gonna happen to you, too, and I would call you and say, "Hey, I'm gonna call Tom, especially during the pandemic, like, what are we not doing? What are we doing?" You didn't take offense with that. It's like, "Hey, man, we need it, this has never been faced before. What do we need to do?" And, you know, Jen, I'm just warning you, I'm gonna be calling Joy and saying, "Hey, is she doing the right thing here?" So there. But I'll just reflect back on the pick that we just had to make yesterday. We went out nationwide and searched, and it was uniform. You're offering up two internal candidates that is gonna be hard to look past, and boy, was that a tough decision because there's two great leaders that we got to pick from. So thank you for that. And again, thank you guys for participating, both of you. I also look on a historical perspective that so much of what a county manager does is to make sure that our employees are represented when it comes to policies, provisions, and to wanna work here. And to think that, you know, I'm looking at all the current leaders, but to see Jan Plank, our former head of human resources, to be here to celebrate you, that's tough, you know, that's a tough thing to pull off. Some of my old human resources people at my farm probably wouldn't wanna show up. But thank you for being here, too, Jan. And then you have Laura now, that gets to work with the people that you've trained. So, Joy, I couldn't be happier for you. I have a young family, too. I'm looking forward to spending time with them, also informative years you have, and plus, you're gonna have a great time, I can see, with those daughters and Barry. So again, you've been spectacular. You'll stay on my speed dial, sorry. And what I'm hearing is you're gonna stay on the speed dial of all these other colleagues, too. It's awfully hard, it has to be hard to work with five different bosses of varying wants and needs for their own respective districts, but forming up to understanding how to run a county. So thank you for that. So with that, would you like to say anything? Because I have a plaque, and I'm gonna force you to take a picture with us, but please.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just, for a couple moments, just thank you profoundly. I came here almost 26 years ago from the city of Phoenix. The city had just been named the best-run city in the world, and Maricopa County was generally regarded as the worst-run government. And I thought it was an opportunity to come here and build my resume, but I did think I was just passing through. I thought I'd stay here a couple years and go back to one of the cities, and it was just an opportunity. Once I got here, I was hooked. I mean, the tremendous work that is done here, I think, is not known by a lot of people. It wasn't known by me, even though I was working in local government. But, you know, you often hear me say, "We meet a lot of people on their very worst day." That is absolutely true, and that, to me, is the role that government needs to serve. So when you're in crisis, no matter where you find yourself or your family finds yourself, you know that now with our branded Soworo, you can find the help that you need here at Maricopa County. And clearly, the employees are a very, very important part of that, and we've talked a lot about that and the tremendous crew that we have here that I couldn't be more grateful for. And I'll talk about a couple of them because they're gonna be continuing to lead you moving forward. But the other thing I'm very proud of, and why I go out and talk about this experience, is working for such a principled group of elected officials. You have, I mean, I've watched what you've gone through, the sacrifices personally, professionally, and politically that you have made to do the right thing. Obviously, elections are front and top of mind when we talk about that, but COVID was no picnic for you either. And as we watched others sacrifice their staffs across the country, not follow scientific evidence in making decisions, but make political decisions instead, you always did the right thing. And we talk about those 8:30 phone calls, you were always present there. Because of open meeting laws, we could only have two of you, the chairman and another supervisor on every morning, but your chiefs were there every morning. You engaged for hours every day with staff. And even at the time, I thought, I think this is beyond unique, and we are beyond fortunate because I don't think anywhere else were the elected officials and the appointed staff rowing in the same direction in a time of crisis like that. And I just really feel that that was a very, very special opportunity and is emblematic of who we are as a team and who this staff is supporting you. I have no qualms that this leadership team and the folks here are well-prepared. This place is gonna run the same the day after I leave as the day before, and you've mentioned some of the tremendous leadership. I have a great team that reports to me. CJ, Laura, Fields, I hope I don't miss anybody here. Joanne Rangel, who runs my office, is unbelievable. I didn't know Joanne when I got here. I consider her a friend for life. I admire her so much as both a human being and how she runs the workplace. We have three unbelievable assistant county managers. Valerie Beckett, who I've worked with for many, many years. You know how strong and determined a woman she is. When something needs fixed, Val goes and fixes it, but she's a warm, loving person who supports her staff and her colleagues. LeAnn Bone, we would not have survived COVID without the ARPA Cares Queen. She got a billion dollars out into the community in a responsible way so that they were fully supported. I'm probably missing some folk, oh, Michelle in Government Relations and her team, I mean, she just quietly gets the job done. She never takes a victory lap. She is highly strategic in what she does. Again, I just couldn't be prouder to work with her. And then I think we need to talk a minute about Ms. Jen Pokorski because she is gonna be a tremendous county manager for you. She has come up through the ranks here. I remember when I first met Jen, she was going to join our ombudsman team. We met her at the Flood Control District. Val said, "I think I've found somebody really special." She was spot-on. Jen is like many of the other hidden gems we have out there that just need to be discovered and nurtured, and she is going to do tremendous things for Maricopa County. I'm going to be cheering you and her on from the sidelines as a county resident, and I am forever grateful for the opportunity you've given me. I can't thank you enough. Thank you.
So I'm gonna invite you down for a picture with the board, but I'm also gonna turn this over to you a little bit, too, Joy. There's a lot of agency. I know what your brevity is always striking. You know that we have a meeting to run, but there's not a lot of things on this agenda. So slow us down for a minute. If you wanna take a picture with your agency heads and the people, I wanna be able to afford that to you, too. Because there's, you can't point them all out, but P&amp;Z is here, Procurement's here, McDot's here, I mean, and everybody is here because, not because they feel like they have to be, it's they wanna be because you're such a great leader. And I wanna forge you that opportunity to get some pictures with them as well. So Jesse, Fields? Okay, let's go board first.
One, two, three. One, two, three.
I forgot to mention you, I'm sorry.
Okay, well, call up a unit.
Can everyone please come up, get your staff here, Maricopa County, please come up for a photo.
Jane, I'm fine.
Just close them. Can you close them?
Three, two, one. And let's get one more.
Wonka, can you come stand next to Jan? Just to, because we can't see you. Thank you.
Fields, come on up here. Three, two, one, and...
John.
Congratulations.
That's okay, no problem.
So can I have the chief, the district chiefs and staff that are here, can we get a picture with Joy? Picture on the 10th floor.
Rick looks so happy.
I love these guys.
I know you do.
Pretend you guys like each other.
Oh, thank you.
Hey, just FYI, I wanna ask LeAnn to speak on item number 38 just briefly.
Hit nudge me, okay?
You're welcome.
I mean, come on, Joy, we got some work to do. Let's go. Enough of the pictures. Thank you, everybody, for that. I promised, I promised my guys, we don't have very much on the agenda, so now it'll be all up to you to speed it up. So, and thank you for the people that are here for the business of the meeting and watching. So thank you for that small delay because it's definitely worth it to us and our people here to celebrate Joy. Okay, we'll now move on then to statutory hearings. Under Transportation, six through nine, patenteesman abandonments. Road file number PAB 0211, road file PAB 0203, road file number PAB 0207, road file number PAB 0166. Madam Clerk, are there any registered speakers or comments received on items five through nine?
Chairman, none were received for these items.
I'm sorry, that was six through nine. Thank you. Then the board will now consider items six through nine.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve items six through nine.
Thank you, Tom. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Under County Officers, Board of Supervisors, number 10, an IGA MOU regarding RIO, oh, Rio imagined? Okay, RAO, real, acronyms, I don't even know what's an acronym anymore. Reimagine, Urban Waters Ambassador. The board will now consider item number 10.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of item number 10.
Thank you, Jack. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Tom. I have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Under County Officers, still Board of Supervisors, number 11, is an appointment of a constable for the Moon Valley Precinct. This is in Mr. Gates' district. Mr. Gates?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. From time to time, this board has the opportunity to appoint folks when we have vacancies in different offices, and one of those offices is constable. And we've talked about this position recently. All of the positions across the county are important, but this is a particularly important position in that you've got a lot of interaction with the public, as Joy Rich said, unfortunately, on people's, you know, roughest days oftentimes. And so when I was looking at a person to fill this vacancy, I was looking for someone that knew how to deal with the public, had a kind heart and compassion. And when using those criteria, it became very clear to me who I wanted to appoint as a member of this board and suggest as a motion for this board. And that is a young man by the name of Matthew McCray. I had the opportunity to meet Matthew at a couple opportunities and very impressed with him. He has a degree in criminology from ASU, so he wants to help protect the people of Maricopa County, have a career focused on public safety, but doing that with a compassionate heart. So with that, Mr. Chair, I would move that Matthew McCray be appointed as the new Moon Valley Constable.
Thank you, Supervisor Gates. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Tom. I have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. And he is here. Bill?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I could just ask, our brand-new Moon Valley Constable, Mr. McCray, if you could just please stand for us and thank you so much for your willingness to serve.
Welcome to the family. Now get to work. Thanks for being here and thanks for seeking the appointment. Okay, we'll then move on to next, which is still under county officers, under clerk of the board, number 12, a special event license for Anthem Rotary Foundation. Under clerk of the court, 13 appointments. And under county attorney, 14 settlement in Maricopa County versus Purdue Pharma et al. The board will now consider items 12 through 14.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of items 12, 13, and 14 with a comment.
Great. I'll look for a second.
Second.
Good. We have a motion, a second. Jack?
Yeah, I just want to thank our Maricopa County Attorney's Office for all the work they've done on item number 14, getting this settlement. They've really played a leadership role in this. I'm not sure it would have happened without their leadership, so thank you.
Thank you for commenting on that, Jack. It has been a lot of work that they did here in this space to bring this to this, not so much conclusion, but to up to this vote. So we do have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
And Mr. Chairman, real quickly, just on item 14, this is just really, in my opinion, the first step. I mean, there's some communities and families that are struggling because of the situation that they're placed in with this. And hopefully, we can start that road to really recovery in helping families, helping kids, and educating, and all that good stuff.
Agreed, wholeheartedly. Thank you, Steve. Okay, moving on then. Under sheriff, 15, IGA with City of Sholo. 16, rescind and replace competition impractical for Leeds Online LLC. Number 17, supplement to the agreement with the Office of National Drug Control Policy. 18, annual renewal of deep undercover vehicle registrations. 19 is FY 23 budget adjustment for one-time items. And under treasure, number 20, is repurchase agreement contract with Daiwa Capital Markets America, Inc. The board will now consider items 15 through 20.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of items 15 through 20.
Great. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Under judicial branch, Superior Court, 21, permanent additions to fleet. 22, appoint attorneys as Superior Court Judges pro tempore. 23, appoint Superior Court Commissioners as Supreme Court Judge pro tempore. The board will now consider item 21 through 23.
Mr. Chair, move approval of items 21 through 23.
Thanks, Bill. Have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Jack. We have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Under county management, Assistant County Manager LeAnn Bone, 24, American Rescue Plan Act expenditure approval and budget adjustment. The board will now consider item 24.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve item number 24.
Thank you, Tom. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'll give it to Jack. So I have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Under county offices, animal care and control, 25, new hope agreement with Little Angels Dog Rescue. 26, donation and budget adjustment. Under correctional health, 27, is an agreement with Violet del Sol. And number 28, amend the MOU with Care First. The board will now consider items 25 through 28.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve items 25 through 28.
Great. Great. Thanks to both of you. We have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Under county offices, elections, 29, precinct committeemen. The board will now consider item 29.
No, next slide.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of item number 29.
Thank you, Jack. Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Tom. Now I'll bring it to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No. But, Mr. Chairman, real quickly, before you call the vote, my plea to try to change some minds here. No, I think, you know, I understand the role of the precinct committee. I'm a precinct committeeman myself. I think there's others on this board that may be PCs as well. But nonetheless, I understand. But I mean, we're appointing folks that we know nothing about. We do a huge vetting on folks that are running for constable legislation. I get it. But even though this is lowered than, it's at the end of the elector scales, it's the smallest elector-type person that is put on our ballot. But I really believe this is a role of the political parties, to come to us without knowing who they are and to say, we're going to bless you and say, you are now deemed an elected official here in Maricopa County. Yes, it's at the bottom of our role here, but nonetheless, I just don't believe it should be the role of the board of supervisors. And it happens all the time. You know, we vote these out, and then the media calls and says, hey, you voted yes on this particular person who did something very bad. So, well, I didn't know. You know, it's, I just don't believe it's our role. So I would hope, and I always pushed this when I was in legislature, that the legislature would amend this and make this a party function where the state party chairs make that type of decision, or the county chairs make that decision, not us. So that's my reason for always voting no. And I appreciate the PCs, trust me. A lot of them are my friends, and I'm a PC myself, but I just don't believe it should be our role.
Steve, I'm glad you touched on the statutory requirements and that you, even at the legislature, when you could make laws or change laws, you pushed for that. But I'm hoping they hear you and at least can figure out at least what could be a better way to vet candidates. Because, look, you pointed out some. We made an appointment to a constable. You were able to spend time and look deep into how that person is going to serve and his mind frame about this job. And what we're doing right now, and always have since I've been on this board, is just appoint people on a list with names that I don't recognize. So I appreciate that. Good luck as you continue to push that statute change forward. And I'm here to hear it when it gets to that point. So.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, but we did take a vote, right? And we did appoint these precinct committeemen.
I haven't called the vote yet.
I didn't call the, we didn't vote?
We did vote, but you didn't say if I won or these guys won.
Oh, well, I think with my arithmetic, I counted four to one. And so towards our statutory authorities, that's a winning vote.
Thank you.
You lost.
First time.
All right. Under equipment services, 30, renewal of vehicle exemptions from markings. Under finance, 31, funds transfers and warrants. Human resources, number 32, amend premium pay rates and approve veterinarian retention incentive. Number 33, revision to Maricopa County Employee Leave Policy, HR 2415. And number 34, market ranges. The board will now consider items 30 through 34.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve items 30 through 34.
Thank you, Supervisor Galvin. I have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Gallardo. I have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Human services, 35 through 36, amend agreements with Community Bridges, Inc., Town of Hila Bend. 37, receipt of carryover funding from the Office of Head Start. 38, early termination of lease agreement with Child Crisis Arizona. 39, submit application for continuation funding for FY 24 program activities. The board will now consider items 35 through, oh, I'm sorry, do you want me to take 39 off?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question about number 38.
Number 38?
Quick question, yep.
Okay, before I call the roll, yes, sir, please. Who would you like to see up here?
If LeAnn or anyone from staff who can answer, just a quick question I have about this.
Welcome, Ms. LeAnn Bone.
Thank you, Chairman.
Okay.
Good morning. Thank you. Just thought if you could quickly give an overview of what we are proposing to do here. And then, you know, first of all, are kids going to be absorbed into other schools and do our families being made aware that there are choices available for them if they would have any questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Galvin. So we currently leased two classrooms at this site. We're only using one, so it's an underutilized location to begin with. It is one of our most expensive lease spaces for Head Start programming, and the lease is going up. All of the kids in this classroom are aging out to kindergarten, so they will all be moving on to kindergarten. No one will be left without services.
Perfect. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yep. Thank you for that question, Tom. Okay, now looking for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, in that vein, with appreciation to staff for answering that question, I move to approve items 35 through 39.
Thank you, Tom. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jack. We have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Under procurement services, 43 42, contracts for job order contractor for facilities management. Modular furniture and related services, electronic resources and multimedia downloads under public health. I'm sorry, 43 through 44, amend agreement and contract with Frontier Nursing University. Provider Tech LLC. 45 is an addition of a trailer to fleet. And number 46 is apply for grant funding from United States Environmental Protection Agency. The board will now consider items 40 through 46.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of items 40 through 46.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. And thank you both to Kevin Tine and Marcy Flanagan for being here, representing the departments. Very important to us. Still under public health, 47, IGA with Arizona Board of Regents on behalf of Arizona State University. 48, termination of lease agreement with Greater Phoenix Urban League. 49, increase to master agreement for testing and training services related to COVID. And under real estate, number 50, agreement for early termination of lease with the Arizona Health and Rehab LLC. The board will now consider items 47 through 50.
Mr. Chair, move approval of items 47 through 50.
Thank you, Supervisor Gates. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Tom. We have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Under transportation, 51, road file number 4453-R. 52, accept state funding from Arizona Department of Emergency and Military Affairs. 53 through 54, accept federal funding from Maricopa Association of Governments. 55, Hila Bend Emergency Storm Drainage Repair Relief Funds. 56, agreement with Salt River Project. And 57, easement, right-of-way, and relocation assistance documents. The board will now consider items 51 through 57.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of items 51 through 57.
Thank you, Jack. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Steve. We have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. And Steve, isn't that nice to see? Item number 55 for Hila Bend. We met each other out there, and we got to see the county in action and some of the infrastructure that's been put in since the flood, so it's great to see it. Under setting of hearings, planning and zoning, 58, planning and zoning, setting of hearings, the board will now consider item number 58.
Move approval of item 58.
Thank you, Bill.
Second.
Thank you, Steve. We have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Consent agenda, 59, donations. 60, duplicate warrants. 61, still-dated warrants. 62, delinquent property tax interest waiver, House Bill 2025. 63, tax abatement. 64, treasures, collections, and disbursement summary for February 2023. Number 65, Head Start Program January 2023 report. And number 66, check enforcement fund quarterly report. The board will now consider items 59 through 66.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve items 59 through 66.
Great. Thank you, Tom. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jack. I have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Under consent agenda continued, 67, settlement resolution of property tax cases and claims. Supervisor Gates?
Yes, Mr. Chair, potential conflict on this item.
Thank you, Supervisor Gates, as you leave the dais. Okay, the board will now consider items 67.
Move for approval.
Thank you, Jack.
Second.
Thank you, Tom. We have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. We will invite Supervisor Gates back to the dais. Great. Welcome back, Bill. Under county attorney, 68, accept supplemental FY 23 victim compensation funding. And 69, quarterly RICO expenditure application FY 23 Q4. The board will now consider items 68 and 69.
So move, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Great. I have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. We will now recess as the board of supervisors and convene as the Flood Control District Board of Directors. Under Flood Control District, 70 minutes. 71, IGA with the City of Scottsdale. 72, adjustment to FY 23 Flood Control District Grant Fund Budget. 73, resignation from the Flood Control Advisory Board, the Flood Plane Review Board, and the Board of Hearing Review Board. And number 74, easement, right-of-way, and relocation assistance documents. The board will now consider items 70 through 74.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to approve, motion to approve items 70 through 74, but I'd also like to make a comment about number 71, please.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Hey, I have a motion, a second. Supervisor Galvin?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I just want to address this IGA with the City of Scottsdale for the Pima Road Drainage Channel project. This is a good long-term project that will provide much-needed flood protection and mitigation for 129 structures in Scottsdale. This is a productive partnership where the county funds 65% of the project cost at approximately $11 million, while the City of Scottsdale funds the other 35%, which is approximately $6 million. We appreciate the hard work between the Maricopa County Flood Control District and the City of Scottsdale, getting this project moving forward, which will benefit many Scottsdale residents. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Tom. We have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. We will now adjourn as the Flood Control District Board of Directors and reconvene as the board of supervisors. Item 75 is our public comment period. Madam Clerk, do you have anything to report regarding public comment email responses?
Chairman, supervisors, we received only one comment via email regarding animal care and control, and this comment has been shared with all of the board offices. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any speaker slips for the public comment period?
I do not have any speaker forms for public comment.
Okay, great. With that, moving on then, we will go to item 76, supervisor's summary of current events, where the board members and county manager get a chance to speak. So I will go to you today, Joy.
Mr. Chairman, I think I've said quite enough today, but I do really want to thank you for today. It's meant a great deal to me, hearing from all of you, seeing my family in the video. So a sincere thank you. I really, it means a great deal to me what's happened here today. Thank you.
Great, Joy. You deserved it. I'll just, I guess, start from my right today. Supervisor Gates?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for a wonderful tribute for Joy today. I thought that was so, so well-handled. This is that time of the year where people are getting out a lot more in the district and very excited that this Friday, we will be a part of the Farm Bureau Farm City Breakfast. So it'll be Friday morning. Would love to see everybody out there. We're going to be up at the Arizona Wholesale Nursery, where this has been held for many years now. And I think I'll have a couple of my friends from Phoenix City Council are going to be coming over. We'll have the Extension Office from the University of Arizona always put on a great presentation, and we're really grateful for that partnership from Farm Bureau. I see our assessor back there, Eddie Cook. I hope that he'll have a chance to stop by. That'll be great. It'll be great to see him and hopefully some other friends from around the county. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Great. Thank you. Tom?
Mr. Chairman, good times last week. I was at the grand opening for the new Southeast Justice Center. We were joined by Judge Pamela Gates and Judge Anna Huberman. And then, obviously, Supervisor Sellers, I almost called you chairman, and I almost called you chairman, Supervisor Gates were there as well. Sorry, Clint. But, you know, this facility is fantastic. It's a streamlining of these operations. We've gone from four buildings to one building. We've updated technology, which streamlines and consolidates our services, which is ultimately in the best interest of our taxpayers. I had my Farm City Breakfast last week at the Freeman Corn Patch in Mesa, which was co-hosted by Councilman Mark Freeman, who's been a great friend to District Two. I think we had over 100 people. Jack, you were there. It was a great turn. It was a great turnout, a great event. I really looked forward to it, and I really enjoyed it. And then finally, once again, Mr. Chairman, thank you for the nice tribute that we had for Joy Rich today. I want also to thank the communications team for a really good video. And then just want to again, thank you, Joy, and wish you the best of luck, and I know you won't be, but don't be a stranger.
Great, thank you, Tom. Hey, don't worry. I know, he's been a chairman, you've been a chairman, and I've been a chairman countless times. Someday you'll be a chairman, but it takes votes.
You have a long memory.
You're not in the same boat, but I've been here a lot longer.
Jack?
Thank you, Chairman. And, yeah, I really appreciated and enjoyed the opening of the Justice Center and that serves both of our districts, and Judge Pamela Gates was there along with her husband. It was a very nice event. And what an impressive efficiency that court will bring to the Southeast Valley. Really well done. I also attended a tour of our Elections Center with the Committee for Safe and Secure Elections. And again, you know, this is people from all over the United States who want to come and see how we run our elections because we do such a great job. You know, all the noise that we hear out in the community, but the people that really are the professionals in this business recognize that this is one of the best elections groups in the entire country. I also attended a reception for the new ADOT Director, Jennifer Toth, at the Arizona Council for Engineering Consultants, and that was well-attended, really an impressive group of folks. It's encouraging to see that Jennifer is so highly respected throughout the entire state. I also attended the International State of the State that was presented by Governor Hobbs. It was a packed house at the Biltmore, and I just was so impressed with all, hearing once again, all the foreign direct investment that we've attracted into this state. You know, we're looking at almost fifty billion dollars in foreign direct investment here, but of course it reminds me that the work that I'm doing really needs to intensify to ensure that we have the critical infrastructure in place to support this expansion. But one of the things that was announced at that, at that meeting was that we're getting a five-point-five-billion-dollar battery factory in Queen Creek, which is in my district. So really exciting things going on. The, you know, the rest of the story on critical infrastructure, I, you know, I'm on the board of Valley Metro, so I've attended a meeting there, Transportation Business Partners, I brought the folks from Maricopa Association of Governments in there to talk to the business community about why, about how important Prop 400 extension is for air quality. And unless we get our air quality business properly aligned, our expansion's going to stop. We right now are rated moderate for air quality, and we're, we're facing becoming rated serious. You know, and some people are saying, even if we do all these things, we still can't comply, but the point is, we have to do all these things so that if we don't comply, we can at least say, here's why we can't comply. We've done everything that is really possible, and so we're working towards that. I think I probably talked enough. But, but Joy, again, we miss you already. Thank you for your leadership. It's been a pleasure working with you for the time I've been on this board. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. I'm going to go a little bit weird here, but there's a county elected here that's attended, and we got a chance to represent our districts and talk about you, Joy. So before I go to Steve, I don't know if our assessor wants to say anything because, you know, your office and this team works a lot with just, not just these electeds, but, but some other electeds too, so I was hoping maybe Eddie has some words.
Well, Mr. Chair and members of the board, thank you very much. I wish I would have known about the morning ceremony. I would have tried to figure out how to get my schedule worked out to come honor you. Being here in the office for three years has shown what one team is about, and we talk about that quite a bit on, with my team. And Joy, with your leadership and the rest of your colleagues here that are elected, that one team spirit is just expanded out across the entire county. And I have a gift for you on behalf of the Assessor's Office. It's one of my challenge coins. It's in copper, which is obviously one of the Cs here in the state of Arizona, but on the back of it says "One Team." And want to continue to have you part of our One Team here in our Assessor's Office, as well as all the other electeds' office, but here as it relates to you folks and creating the One Team and that culture, and I couldn't be more proud and excited to be part of that One Team. And again, many, many thanks for your many years of faithful service to our community here in the county as well as the state of Arizona. We will miss you. I did congratulate your next, you know, county manager recently, and I'm looking forward to meeting with her and just kind of catching up as well. But again, many, many thanks.
Great, thank you, Eddie. Thank you, Eddie, and thank you for representing the other, what we call the other electeds here, so thank you for that. I'm sure all of them would have said the same thing with that "One Team," so I appreciate it. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and yes, once again, thank you, Joy, for your service and everything you have done for our constituency, our families, our employees. Once again, you've just been a true role model for, for everybody, so thank you once again. I also, apparently I have a vacancy on the Flood Control Hearing Board, so we'll talk later. But nonetheless, I just want to say thank you, Joy. Mr. Chairman, real briefly, last week, we had the honors of being out in Glendale for a groundbreaking new complex, a hundred-and-twenty-million-dollar new complex for affordable housing. This was a partnership by, this is a wonderful example of what can happen when everyone comes together, puts their heads together, maximizes their dollars, and makes something great. It's in a part of Glendale that has its challenges, and you've got the city, you've got the county, you've got the state, you've got private, all coming together to create this beautiful facility of three-hundred-and-sixty-eight units, I believe it's three-hundred-and-sixty-eight units, I'm always wrong on that one, three-hundred-and-sixty-eight units of affordable housing. And it wasn't easy. It wasn't easy. Once again, you know, this beautiful project comes to Glendale, and my hats off to the elected officials out in Glendale who really take a courageous stance. And when, when folks come out and say, not in my neighborhood, I don't want these people in my neighborhood. I don't want that type of folks. And these elected officials in Glendale stand up and say, thank you for your comments, I appreciate it, but I'm sorry, it's happening. It's the right thing to do. And it really energizes me to even do more in my community, in my supervisor districts, to really push for, for affordable housing for everyone. People are struggling right now. They are, they're struggling just to put a roof over their families. And when you have a project like this, I believe it's called Centerline, Centerline? Centerline? That is going to be the house or the home of three-hundred-and-sixty-eight new families with so many different wraparound-type services in there, it's going to really help so many families out there in Glendale. So my hat's off to Glendale and the elected official. Though the mayor was there, the governor was there, and we've participated in a lot of these groundbreaking ceremonies when it comes to housing and affordable housing. This is the first time that I've ever attended a groundbreaking ceremony, or even a ribbon-cutting ceremony, that the governor was there, and the governor was there to participate. I believe it's her, her, it is her really passion and understanding of why we need additional housing for families that are struggling. So kudos to everyone that was involved in that project. I was excited to be there, had a great groundbreaking ceremony, and look forward to the ribbon-cutting ceremony where we can open it up and start allowing families to move in. And thank you to all the partners, too, state, county, city, everyone that was involved, a lot of nonprofits, public, everyone, or private, everyone coming together to deal with this. So that was a big thing. The other thing I want to share, there was a report by the CDC that talked about youth, and y'all know, I'm a, I would advocate for, for young people until I die. I mean, especially poor kids that, that are facing so many challenges economically and socially, I will advocate to the end. But there was a report that came out that talked about kids, and we talked about how the weather's getting nicer, people are getting outdoors, but those kids that are economically challenged in their family, their household, are less likely to have physical activities. And I started reading more about it, and it makes sense. You, you would understand it because your kids participate in, in sports and, and other club teams, and my niece does too. She does volleyball, she does gymnastics. I know how expensive it is for these kids to participate, but it talks about how many of these kids that are on the lower economic spectrum aren't able to participate. You have schools that are struggling, they're cutting back on sports and other extracurricular activities, and you have many of the so-called, Phoenix used to have them all the time, that, you know, the Parks and Recs, and they're kind of cut back because of financial restraints, and, and there's less opportunity, especially for kids that just cannot afford the club team. Everything is club now. Everything's club. That'd be soccer, baseball, basketball, volleyball, even gymnastics. It's all just clubs. And unless you are in a household that has the financial means to participate, these kids are left out, and they don't, they don't have these opportunities. So it was just an eye-opener. I would share the, the report to everybody. It was written by the CDC and just talks about the, the issues, and then it talks about, of course, obesity and all that stuff related to kids and so on. But it was a great report, and it just goes to heart that some of our families are facing tremendous challenges, and when it comes to trying to, to support our families, it does take a village, it does take everyone coming together from not only the county, the city, the state, nonprofit, the private sector, religious faith group, everyone coming together to support our families, whether it be housing or just making our kids much more healthier and safe. So just throw that out.
Well, I'm going to have to bring a little bit of levity now with my comments. First of all, Andrew, was I okay? Eddie was an honorary Board of Supervisors, so it fits the agenda, so don't sue me. Okay, great. So this, this, this actually passed a couple weeks, and attending some meetings out, out in my district, made me realize, hey, this is the good part about being the judge. We've, we've been so centered on one topic here for the county, our whole group, everything, it seems that that's the only thing that makes a paper, but by going out and visiting the two big homeowners associations of Sun City and Sun City West, and, and sitting with legislators and talking about, you know, problems, perceived or otherwise, and getting a chance to talk about what the county's doing as their, as their form of government in unincorporated areas, made, made me feel really great. The other, the other part that I was able to witness was being chairman, but having things I had to accomplish in the West Valley to get to watch my two colleagues and my vice chair open up a fantastic facility, along with the judicial side of this family business, and, and knowing that, that some great things were going on in the East Valley, that I could start, that I could continue to take care of things in the West Valley. So thanks for doing a great job in representing. I heard it went very well. I saw Justice Huberman at the Manaw concert, and she talked about it, so that was great, a little conversation. I was over in the West Valley also at that time talking to the farmers. I had the Farm City Breakfast, and I told the Maricopa County Farm Bureau, listen, this year, I'll be there, I'll, I want to hear people, I want to write down what the problems are, but my preference is to let the other county elected shine, and I'll just be there if they, if they have any questions. So Sheriff Penzone and Eddie Cook was there, talking to the farmers in the rural areas, and that it led to this question, the great, great speeches on both of them, very funny, very, very good about what they do for the county. But sadly, they walked up and asked me, is it standard county uniform? Your sheriff's wearing this big cowboy hat, your assessor's wearing this cowboy hat, and the way I see it, you're the only farmer that represents the county. Why aren't you wearing a hat? And I said, we don't wear cowboy hats in the chicken barns. It scares the hell out of the chickens. So thank you for representing the rural lifestyle there, always, Eddie. And before, before I go, because we're going to bring this in before eleven, I'm going to tell a quick story, and how I've talked about it before, about the first time, I think, I met Joy Rich. And I've told this story, and it always makes Joy wants to run out with her hair on fire. So I remember coming here and, and talking to Joy and remembering that we are of the same age, a wonderful age, by the way. And I was looking at Joy one of our first meetings, and I said, you know, where, Joy, where are you, you know, where are you from? Lake Havasu. Now, my parents owned a condo in Lake Havasu from nineteen-seventy-eight to like two thousand seven, and I remember as a young man borrowing my brother's jet boat and taking some friends and going to Lake Havasu during spring break on, at college and a little bit after it. And I'm, I still remember going to a singles bar called Who's Songs and having this meeting and this conversation, because I think she had some friends, she, she, okay, she had some friends that were there from Lake Havasu. I definitely had some friends from Peoria that were there, and they were mingling around, and I've always been a conversationalist, and I had this great conversation with this nice-looking woman, and we talked for about an hour while our friends were trying to do whatever they were doing. And I said, Joy, I think, do you remember, I think that was you. And she's never copped to it. And I think the very first time, you know, I told her this story, it's about, you know, when I was telling her this, it's kind of a new elected, and she was assistant, assistant county manager at the time. I think she's going to do the same thing. She got red, just like back then, and ran out of that room with her hair on fire, so I'm glad that I can do that to you one final time, what could have been, Joy Rich. I've told my wife that story too. She thinks it's great. So anyway, with a little bit of levity, hey, Joy, thank you for, for the great years. Thank you for giving us this team, and good luck to everybody. I so appreciated our years just because of these types of conversations we've been able to have for a decade now. So with that, we are adjourned.